We will call this meeting of the Tacoma Park City Council to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Spurrier.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Mayo.
Here.
Councilmember Koreshi.
Here.
Councilmember Seaman.
President.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Oh, here.
Thank you very much. Tonight's agenda, if you looked at an earlier version, we were first going to do the city manager's proposed FY 2017 budget and then take our second reading of the establishing of vacant and abandoned property registry. We have switched the order, so we will do the voting on the second reading ordinance of the vacant and abandoned property registry first. The rest of the agenda will stay the same. Moving forward, looking at our agenda, on Monday evening, April 11th, we will have a council meeting. It will be on the Capitol budget, and we'll be discussing that on Monday evening, starting at 7:30, if people would like to attend that meeting. We will have our regular Wednesday meeting on April 13th. The meeting will actually begin at 6:30, and the council, along with residents, are welcome to meet with the resident members of the police pension board in the hydrangea room. And so we'll be talking about the police pension at 6:30 with them. Following with the regular meeting, on April 13th, we have two public hearings. The first public hearing is on the FY 2017 budget, and then the second public hearing is on an amendment, ordinance amending the city code to restrict the commercial use of plastic, single-use carryout bags. So those two public hearings are next week. Our work sessions, we have tentatively scheduled a discussion of the proposed library design. The council, along with members of the community, just met with the architect, Greg Lukemeyer, to go over some of the designs and what it would look like outside the library, and that will be available up on the website for people to review. And just a reminder, there's also other materials up there, and people can provide comments and take a survey regarding the library design. In addition, we will have a work session next week on an update on the Flower Avenue-Green Street project and expenditures required to finalize the design. We will also have a discussion of the Tacoma Junction redevelopment process committee and appointment process, and a discussion of the franchise agreement with Comcast and the MOU with Montgomery County. Then on Monday, April 18th, we will have another special session, budget work session, to discuss programs advancing our council goals. If people are interested in the council goals, they can find them on the city website as well. And then our regular Wednesday night meeting, on April 20th, we will have a public hearing on the Streetscape Manual and a tentative work session to review options for LED conversion of streetlights in Tacoma Park. We continue our Monday night meetings on April 25th with a budget work session on departmental and nondepartmental budget discussion and budget reconciliation discussion. Then our regular meeting on Wednesday, April 27th, we have more public hearings. We have a public hearing on the constant yield tax rate and another public hearing on our FY 2017 budget. We have a voting session scheduled for April 27th. It is the first reading ordinance amending the city code regarding the restriction on the use of plastic, single-use carryout bags, and tentatively scheduled the first reading ordinance approving the franchise agreement with Comcast, tentatively scheduled an ordinance approving additional expenditures for the Flower Avenue-Green Street design, and a resolution of providing for appointments of committee. That takes us to the end of April, and I, just as a reminder, on Saturday, April 30th, is Green Fest from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. here in the community center and out on Maple Avenue. Just to give my colleagues a heads up, hopefully if all goes well with our budget meetings moving forward, we have tentatively scheduled not to hold a council meeting on Wednesday, May 25th. So if we all do our work, we can not hold our council meeting that night.
Carried in the stick.
Yes, exactly. All right, well, that's the upcoming council meetings. Now we will turn to public comments on our voting items this evening. Again, we are voting on the second reading ordinance establishing a vacant and abandoned property registry. If anyone has any public comments regarding that, please come to the podium.
Is this working?
No.
Hello?
Yep.
This is Pat Lovelace, your official peach delegate. On the abandoned properties and stuff, I'd like, like I said last week, I'd like to see us do away with the word blighted, because blighted means diseased, like the American chestnuts blight, because a lot of trees were blighted and killed off by a virus or fungus, and it wiped out the species. There's no such a thing as a house that's going to cause other houses to catch a disease and wipe out the species of houses. So what I'm saying is that the word blighted is misused, and it also reminds people of the ghetto, poor people, black people, minorities, things that are shoved aside in the dock. You know, but I'd like to see us use the word dilapidated, or rundown, weather-beaten, uninhabitable, words like that describe a house like that, unsafe. Things like that we can use, there are numerous adjectives for that. We don't need to be using the word blighted, because that bothers me, I don't like that word, and it's very, very misleading. I don't think there's any houses around here that are diseased. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments on our voting item this evening? Yeah, all right. We'll move on then to other public comments, if anyone has other public, ahead, Mr. Lovelace, if you'd like to start us off.
Yes, again, this is Pat Lovelace, your official peach delegate, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park. I'd like to tell people that today's the 6th of April, and you know what that means. You've only got 20 more days before Election Day, the final day on the primaries, and it's a very important thing. You've got to decide who you want to see on the ballot. It's best not to just sit down and do nothing, because you're showing people you really don't care about your country, you don't give a hoot. And like I said, don't be a member of the D-Gas Club, come on out here and vote for peace. Show people we can do it, because I know we can do it. Bring your kids down to the polls too, so they can learn about what voting is all about, and get them started off in interest at a young age. That's part of what parents can do to teach their children to be peaceful, and raise them up in a nonviolent setting. And also, I'd like to see an end to the gangs around this area too, because there's another weird gang going around the area too, was on TV tonight, about ATVs and dirt bikes surrounding an ambulance today, there was dozens of them, and it's been going on for about a year, because there was a cop dragged down the street, went to location because of that. And I'd like to see us beware of that, beware of the possibility of where our kids are when these things happen, and use the time to teach people that that is not the way to bring peace and solitude to our communities. Thank you very much, and remember, it all starts at the voting booth, show people you care, on April 26th. Thank you for the primaries. I'll be down there with the peace sign.
My name is Kim Kisho. I am a professor of management and marketing at Washington Adventist University, and for the third year in a row, running the Family Fun Festival. It will be Sunday, this coming Sunday, April 10th. From noon to 5:00, we've ordered good weather, the bad weather is on Saturday, not on Sunday. And we would like to invite all of you to come out and have a good time. We have added this year activities for the youth. In the past, the focus has been on small children, and we noticed a lot of young people walking around with nothing to do at the fair. And so there will be a lot of games and activities for all ages. A good concert, a good time, and I hope you can make it out there. Thank you.
Any other public comments this evening?
Good evening all, Paul Huesner, Board 3. I recollect that last year, the city manager sent a letter to the council on the budget, and that letter said that it would be necessary to raise the property tax rate 2 cents, and you guys agreed on 1 and 1/2 cents per hundred, because assessments were down. Well, my assessment just went up 40%, okay? So now that assessments are back up, you know, way beyond what they were, I would respectfully suggest to the council, very seriously consider giving back to the citizens that are paying these taxes, part of that money, and try and find, I know it's tough, but that's why you're sitting there, to make the tough decisions and find some ways to save some money, and see if we can't be just as honorable with the citizens as we have, you know, with the staff, in terms of, staff says we need more money, there's more money. Now we're saying, now that the assessments are up, it seems like there should be some degree of quid pro quo, and that's what I'm here to speak about, and I'd just like to have it on the record. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening?
Good evening, this is Elizabeth Wallace. As you know, I didn't get a chance to finish my public comment here recently, so I'm back. To city council members and staff, please, I ask you, one, be civil. It takes hours to write and edit remarks for a three-minute presentation at the podium, right Peter? If a resident voter needs to go slightly over to make a point, perhaps you could graciously offer it a short extension, time permitting, especially if their perspective doesn't agree with yours, because it might take a bit longer to understand. Two, be compassionate. Please commit the names of these three people to memory. Susanna Batters, 19, a student. Jason Simkins, 19, her boyfriend. Raymond Batters, 63, Susanna's father. They're not Tacoma Park residents, if they had been perhaps a year ago, there would have been a standing-room-only candlelight vigil here. They're now irrevocably linked to us, however, and to our city's reputation, because, as you know, they died as a result of an accident involving a Tacoma Park government vehicle driven by an off-duty policeman. He's been charged with negligent driving, reckless driving, changing lanes when unsafe, and excessive speed. They will never speak three minutes at this podium. Their time was up on March 21st, 2015. Be transparent. Announce alleged crimes involving Tacoma Park police officers in the Tacoma Park newsletter. Few residents are aware of these incidents, despite the fact they were covered by the Washington Post, the Capitol Gazette, WBAL-TV, the Chesapeake, Montgomery Community Media, WUSA 9, NBC, Gannett, and more. Four, be observant. Attend any and all trials of our police officers for crimes allegedly committed on or off duty. None of you were in the PG County courtroom on March 14th for Travis Ayla's road rage case. I was. I hope to see you in Annapolis on June 13th at 8:45 a.m. Five, be mindful listeners. Recent alleged crimes by our officers include road rage with a gun, reckless driving resulting in three deaths, and an assault of a DC police officer. All residents should be encouraged to give their thoughts, pro or con, regarding an officer's reinstatement. Let's honor Susanna, Jason, and Raymond in the remaining 21 seconds.
Any other public comments this evening? All right, thank you. For the record, I just want to note while we were out last week, I signed two proclamations, one declaring support for the 2016 Playful City USA application and a proclamation recognizing Arbor Day in Tacoma Park. Now I'd like to turn to council comments. Are there any comments this evening from the council? Councilmember Kovar.
Two things. One, I've spoken previously about the efforts to address some of the concerns that people throughout the city, and especially in North Tacoma, have about the Montgomery College facilities master plan. So as part of that ongoing effort, I did testify today before the Montgomery County Council urging that the potential funding for the first project that would emerge under that master plan be, if possible, held off for a year or two, to enable the kind of consultation to take place that we believe should have happened under the agreement that the college signed. So that's an ongoing effort, but that's just an update. And then the second thing is, and I'm just directing this to Suzanne, there've been a couple of things that we've talked about involving the State Highway Administration and Philadelphia Avenue, and I understand that the rights of way are not always evident, and homeowners may not know whether, which parts of their yard are actually part of it, or maybe part of the right of way, but I think we ought to develop a more standardized way of getting in touch with homeowners in advance when something, when work is going to be done by the State Highway Administration, so that they're not surprised, and honestly, maybe there are alternatives in some cases too, but at a minimum, letting people know that something like that's going to be taking place, so, thanks.
Councilmember Schultz.
Friday after next, April 15th, there's going to be a walking tour of the Crossroads commercial area, which will include the two corners of that intersection that are in Tacoma Park, and the other two corners, which are on the other side of University Boulevard that are in Prince George's County. The purpose of the walking tour, which I have been working for several months to arrange, is to bring together officials of Prince George's County, Montgomery County, and Tacoma Park. When I say officials, I mean not just elected people, but also planning staff, as well as state of Maryland planning, planners, and property owners and business owners, to begin to walk the, to walk the area together on both sides of the county line, to begin to understand the, what is actually happening, going on literally day-to-day in the Crossroads business area. It's called the Crossroads for a good reason, because of the intersection of two very busy major highways. And it is also the location of the soon-to-be-open Bus Transit Center at the intersection, right at the intersection where the old Taco Bell used to be, and it is going to be the future location of a station stop on the Purple Line. The area eventually, someday, is going to physically change, but the question comes is, well, how is it going to change, and who's going to be in charge of seeing how these changes progress? Over the years, there's been very little representation of that business community, because it's split, bisected, literally, by a county line, so the tendency naturally is, is that, well, we'll let the other guys worry about it. So what we're trying to do is pull together all the stakeholders, including residents who shop in the Crossroads area, or have to put up with the congestion and the noise and the trash that comes from that, as well as business owners, private property owners, all the stakeholders, and bring them together on a periodic basis to be able to talk and help plan for the future development of, and changes of that area over the coming years. And the walking tour is kind of an orientation for everybody, because all of us who live in Tacoma Park, we're pretty, we're more or less familiar with the side that's in Tacoma Park, and the same is true for the people that live in Prince George's County or work over there, but not so familiar with the other side. So I, this tour is open to the public, will be guided, there'll be a program. County Councilmember Tom Hucker is going to be there. Prince George's District 2 Councilmember Danny Taveras and her staff will be there. There will be a number of people from the Prince George's County Planning Department on this tour, as well as folks from Montgomery County and here, and the Maryland Department of State Planning. It'll be a two-hour walk. I think it'll be an opportunity for everybody to learn and kind of get a look and a feel for what's good about the area, what we want to keep, and what we think is kind of like awful. And so the best way for us to do that is all to be on, literally, on the same page, so that we know what we're talking about, and that's why we're having this tour. It will begin at 1:00 p.m. Go from 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. We will convene at the doorway to the 7676 Professional Building, which is on New Hampshire Avenue, next door to the Starbucks. And I look forward to seeing as many people who are interested as possible to come along. I think it'll be very interesting and fun, and a chance to meet and talk casually with all kinds of officials and business owners and people like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments this evening? Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to thank residents for coming out last night for the meeting with Washington Adventist Hospital to discuss the future plans of the campus. This was just one meeting in a series of, hopefully, a number of meetings with the community. There will be up to 360,000 square feet of vacant space on that campus once the hospital leaves, so it's very important that the city council, city staff, and residents come up with ideas of what we can do with that space. So I want to thank everybody, and please keep your calendars open for a future meeting. I would like to talk about legislation before the General Assembly. Not much has changed since last time I spoke. The highway user revenue bills are in limbo. The Speaker of the House, Mike Bush, is trying to figure a way forward. The open meetings, training bill, or the open meeting training bills in the Senate did not come out of committee, so we don't have to worry about that, but we still have to have our eyes on the local government tort claim bills. It looks like those bills are moving forward, and this would increase the liability for the city for tort claims. So if anything does come up in the next couple weeks, sign or die is April 11th, when if legislation has not passed, then it will not pass this session. So I'll let you know if anything develops. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, I have a few updates this evening. One is by, we had a, I had a request from the Committee on the Environment for us to look into signing the Compact of Mayors. This is a global coalition that was launched by the UN Secretary-General of Mayors around the world, committed to reducing local greenhouse gas emissions. Touch base with our sustainability manager, Gina Mathias, and we're actually doing many of the things already, and she said this would be very easy for us to sign on to, and we can meet all of the three-year benchmarks probably in two years, so we are going to move forward with that. I also wanted to let everyone know that last week, the city manager and myself were in Annapolis, meeting with the governor's deputy, chief of staff, to talk about New Hampshire Avenue, and to make sure they know about all the opportunities that are there, so complementing, I think, some of the great work that Councilmember Schultz is doing in that area. Also, I'd like to remind folks that we have Friday coffees coming up. These are opportunities for residents to come out, have a cup of coffee or tea, and to spend time with myself, city council member, and city staff. The next one will be on April 15th with Councilmember Koreshi and Councilmember Kovar at Capital City Cheesecake. Then we will have one on May 6th with Councilmember Schultz at the Papoussaria on University Avenue. And then on May 20th, we have one with Councilmember Mayo at Spring Mill Bakery. So I hope to see people at each of those. And then finally, while we were away last week, I just want to say and recognize that the city manager had her one-year anniversary last Friday, and thank her for all her work, and I hope people get to see the newsletter that I believe was just delivered today, and a very nice interview with the city manager. Does the city manager have comments this evening?
Yes, just a few. I'll go quickly over the items that I put in front of you. Our emergency manager, Ron Hardy, and Public Works Director, Daryl Braithwaite, attended a meeting of similar staff from across Montgomery County today, focused on Zika virus. What I've heard from both of them, they, I didn't, they didn't get back till very late in the afternoon, but they felt it was a very good meeting. The county is trying to set up an all-inclusive website about answering questions about Zika virus, how to, you know, treat standing water on a property, how to request assistance from the county on issues, as well as make connections for health care and that kind of information. It should be up by May 1st. There's still going to be some follow-up meetings about everything that needs to go on to that. Obviously, everybody is concerned about that virus, because it has some significant unusual effects. Take precautions to avoid mosquito bites. You might want to go to the CDC website, which does have a lot of information about taking precautions, and that the way that the Zika virus can be transmitted. It can also be transmitted by sexual contact with a person who's been to an area that has the Zika virus, and it lasts for some time. The virus can stay in your body for some time. Want to mention briefly that, and Mr. Lovelace will appreciate this, make sure you're listening, that we are looking at call-in options for people who can't easily send an email address, email messages to the council, and so we're looking into some options for that. It may be something that happens before a meeting, but is recorded, but we will be letting you know when we find out how the logistics might work for that.
Love it, thank you very much.
Trying, trying. The Tacoma Junction Development Agreement process does continue to progress. I know that some information will be shared with the council later today. We understand that representatives of the co-op in NDC met last week, and we're hopeful that they can come to an agreement either later this month or in early May. Wanted to let you know, I got a call from the Montgomery County 311 system coordinator, Leslie Hamm. Many of you will know that, especially if you live close, if you have an extension on a phone, like 891, it is one, if you call 311 from your landline phone, you'll go to the Prince George's County 311 system, not the Montgomery County 311 system. That has been a longstanding complaint. The county has managed to get a fix in place. It is now, when you call 311, and I actually had this tested by people today, you will get an automated attendant asking you to press 1 for Montgomery County or 2 for Prince George's County. It's still not as sophisticated as it should be, and they want to actually make the sound of the message a little friendlier, but it is now an opportunity to not have to call the 240-777-0311 number, you can just call 311. Wanted to let you know that our planning staff have submitted some projects through the COGS Transportation Planning Board's TLC program, just as applications to see how that we might go. One is a conceptual plan for improving Maple Avenue as a complete street, and the other is some preliminary engineering for a low-stress bikeway on New Hampshire Avenue frontage roads, that is something that would help advance as we move towards the multiway boulevard, at least it gets us a step to it. These are relatively small projects. These are relatively small projects. The, the assistance ranges between $30,000 and $60,000 for planning projects, and that comes to their consultants to do their work, it doesn't come to the city. But we're trying to continually push the buttons to see if there's some assistance that can come our way.
Do you say what a complete street is?
A complete street, yeah, they should say that. Doesn't have gaps. It allows for pedestrians, bicyclists, vehicles, mass transit, landscaping, good stormwater control, very similar to Green Street program. And it's something that, you know, Maple Avenue has got quite a lot of space, but the sidewalks are relatively narrow for the number of people that use it. And, and it doesn't feel as spiffy as it could easily feel. And I think that that's something we're looking to have it be more of a pride of the community. Wanted to mention the Washington Ventus University Spring Service Day was today, so there were people out cleaning from the school, and wearing yellow shirts, as I see over there, marking Spring Service Day, and they collected 16 bags of trash and 12 bags of recycling from Sligo Creek. It's 19 days until the 5K, TKPK 5K race, so we're looking forward to that. And I just wanted to give a kudo to Dave Burbank and Karen McPherson. They've done really a great job in promoting graphic novels and the whole library science behind encouraging graphic novels. Yesterday, they conducted a class for William &amp; Mary College students via Skype on the graphic novel and how you, how they're used in libraries. And so I just wanted to give a shout-out for their great work.
I would just comment that my son is doing his best to read all the graphic novels in the library.
Okay, good.
Can I just ask, are we doing any special spraying with mosquitoes because of the Zika virus?
We're trying to coordinate with Montgomery County, and that's, we don't have the answer yet on how and when that might happen, but I'm anticipating within the next couple of weeks, we should have better information on that.
Good, thank you.
All right, any other legislative updates from the city clerk to augment what Councilmember Smith provided the information? Terrific. Then we will move to our first item tonight, which is our voting on the second reading ordinance establishing a vacant and abandoned property registry. And I see our city attorneys here, would you like to take us through this?
Sure, thank you. There have only been minor changes since first reading. I added a definition of vacant property registry, meaning the official record of vacant distressed property, a vacant property registered with the city, just to make it clear what we're talking about. And I also added a provision that an amended registration statement should be filed with the city within 15 days after a vacant building becomes occupied. And then the city would, well, verify that fact, and then remove the building from the vacant property registry. This will help the city keep its vacant property records up to date. It'll avoid code enforcement, having to spend additional time monitoring what they thought was a vacant property, but is no longer, avoid having to send renewal notices for vacant property registration after a property is occupied. So that's the only changes to that. I was also asked to look at the proposed bill that Councilmember Tom Hooker drafted for Montgomery County, which, to my knowledge, hasn't been introduced yet. But first, the county, proposed county bill, only deals with vacant residential property, houses only. They don't require registration for 90 days. The city's proposal is 30 days, which can be extended for cause. Requires the owner to register property. The city's ordinance is a little broader in that respect for properties that are distressed in foreclosure, or a tax lien sale, or probate proceedings, or other types of proceedings. Responsible party, that could be the lender, could be a property servicer, may register the building. That's what we call vacant distressed property. I think that's beneficial, because oftentimes, if it's in foreclosure and vacant, frankly, the owner's gone. You can't find them, and they don't really have any incentive to register, and they won't. Under the proposed county ordinance, there would be an inspection of vacant houses upon registration, and then, well, presumably, follow-up if there were violations found. But then, at least annually, if it's not maintained, or it's a public nuisance, or once every three years if it's being maintained. They have a few exemptions, similar to ours. They actually exempt properties for one year if it's for sale or rent. Our ordinance says six months, because houses sell pretty quickly, and that can be extended under the city's ordinance. They also have a one-year exemption for houses seeking development approvals, owning changes, or subdivision approvals, and up to two years for houses in probate, which frankly, I think is a little long. No exemption should exceed three years total. Under the proposed county ordinances, the fees, well, they're, we don't really know what they are, because they're to be set by executive regulations, so they're not established yet. But the idea, as my understanding, is that they're to increase based on the number of inspections required. So if more than one inspection was required, they'll charge the owner an inspection fee. To be honest, I don't know how they're going to collect that. If the owner's not around, it's going to be difficult, and they're going to end up after a year or so probably putting it on a tax bill. But it's, since one of the stated goals, to be honest, was to make it more expensive to keep it vacant than not, I'm not sure that reaches that goal. There's no penalty stated for failure to register, but this is an amendment to the county's housing and property maintenance standards, meaning that any violation of that chapter would be a Class A municipal infraction offense, which is a $500 penalty, same as ours. I guess the main problem, I think, is they're going to have problems finding the owner, and that the owner themselves may not have control of the property, whereas if we put that responsibility on a lender or property preservation company seeking foreclosure, at least you've got a party you can go to.
Thank you, Ms. Perelman. All right, so focusing on our ordinance, I appreciate the update and the comparison to what is being proposed at the county level. I see, before we move into Councilmember Schultz, did you have a question before?
Yes, I did.
Sure.
Pearlman, you were saying, in Mr. Hooker's draft that you've seen so far...
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Koreshi, for turning on my sound. You were saying in Mr. Hooker's draft bill, about there would be an inspection of, of a vacant property at some point, if, if there is, at least at the, when the property is first registered, and, and then subsequently, every three years, if the property is maintained well, and, and annually, if it's not. Does, is, does, am I, first of all, am I hearing that correctly?
Yes.
And, and if, and if so, does, does our proposed bill contemplate anything similar to that?
Certainly, in the foreclosure situation, we provide that the lender must inspect the property monthly.
The lender must inspect the property monthly?
Yes, and, and in order to determine whether it should be registered. And we have certainly clear maintenance standards. I don't think we make it express, but I think it's kind of assumed that the code enforcement will.
Well, the, the reason, the reason I, it perked up my ears is that we have some properties in our city that I guess would be notorious for their, for their, and I hesitate to use where the word blighted condition, so I will say they're chronically deteriorated condition. Or they, they just be, they become, as in some cases, places that are just abused on the inside, they're ignored. People, one case I know, the house is used for storage, because the person that owns it is a hoarder, even though they live elsewhere. Or an apparent hoarder, I should say, I don't want to jump to any conclusions. And it just seems to me that in some of those cases, requiring an inspection gives the city the opportunity officially to have a reason to penetrate the envelope of that building, so we can actually see if there's something dangerous happening or in that house. In other words, if the house is being...
In, in, none of these cases is it an interior inspection?
This is just an exterior inspection?
County, city?
Okay, I wish there was a way we could do, we could get at least one time into the interior of these vacant properties, the ones that are perpetually vacant. It just seems like, since they're uninhabited, we're not violating anybody's civil rights. And I'll just leave it there, I'm not, I, this may not, I'm not, I'm not necessarily mayor suggesting we amend the second, the reading, because we're a little, I think, beyond that point. But it's just something that occurred to me that I wanted to kind of articulate.
The city attorney, you want to respond or have any comment?
Sure. If, if it's vacant, there's less concern about what the inside looks like and whether it's safe or not. The question is whether it has dangerous conditions on the exterior or visual light, which is more common. The only ones, the only houses that city, or the county for that matter, inspects the interior of are rental.
Right, I know that. That's, that, that's true, but in this case, it is, it is in a category different. It's, it's not a rental, and it's not owner-occupied. It is vacant, and so it's a third category. And I know we, we have no rights to inspect the interior of a single-family household. But, so that's why I bring it up.
Thank you. Before I ask whether or not someone would like to move this, is there any other questions or clarifications? No? Okay, yeah.
Sorry, one question. My understanding from Tom Hooker and county staff was that, with regard to an issue we discussed, whether the registration fees could increase over time, that they had a legal determination that gave them confidence that that could happen under the county law, if there was one or county, county action. So I would just note, again, no amendment needed, but if the county takes action, which necessitates a review of our law at that point in the future, that that legal rationale could be the basis for us changing what we do currently if we don't choose to just follow the county's approach. Thank you.
All right, so now, would someone like to move this ordinance?
So moved.
Councilmember Mail, would I get a second?
Second.
Councilmember Koreshi, second. Any amendments or discussion on this? No? All right, then this is the second reading ordinance, so the clerk called the roll. Councilmember Kovar?
Yes.
Councilmember Mail?
Yes.
Councilmember Koreshi?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
Unanimous. Great, thank you very much, Ms. Perelman, and thank you to the housing staff for working on this. And now, we will turn it over to the city manager for presentation of the budget. Thank you.
And joined here today by, by Susan, Susan Chung, who's our finance director, and pleased that you will see a lot of her over the next month, as we go through the budget. We're covering fiscal year 2017, and this covers July 1, 2016, to June 30, 2017. And actually, I like, I've been doing lots of kids with books pictures lately, it's kind of fun. I'll be going through several different things this evening. I'll do an overview of the budget, kind of big-picture items. The capital budget, the operating budget, how the council priorities are addressed in the budget, how there's some opportunities for you to make some modifications as you decide how to best implement some of your priorities, and then a review of the budget schedule. The, we're in the, between $24 million and $20, and $32 million, depending on what kind of combinations of funds you're looking at. The total revenue of all funds, $29.8 million. Total expenditures of all funds are $32.6 million. The difference is made up by reserve funds. The total general fund revenues are $24.5 million, and total general fund expenditures are $27.5 million. General fund expenditures are those that are predominantly paid for by property tax monies and income tax monies, and deal with most of the regular activities that the city does. I am proposing to keep the tax rate at 5.8, $0.58 per $100 valuation. One of the things, the, the thing that I drove Susan crazy about this year, and I always drive everybody crazy about, is the unassigned general fund fund balance. What is the magic number? We have a kind of standing practice that we need $3 million. It comes out actually pretty close to $3 million for the normal fluctuations of income and outgo through, over the course of the year. So we need to have $3 million somewhere in our reserves to allow for that fluctuation to occur. And so it's, how much is left over that $3 million that indicates if we've got some play in the funds? We have about $300,000 over that $3 million amount. I wanted to note, however, that in this budget, because there is a million dollars budgeted for the city's contribution to the Ethan Allen Street project, that, and that money wouldn't be spent until well into the year, there's flexibility on these funds, and how we handle that is going to be part of your discussions. So the, the $303,000 that are kind of our, our operating extra monies could be more if a variety of steps were taken. So I'm just laying that out as something that, as we go through this budget and think about it and, and talk about items through the work sessions, you may wish to consider handling the funds a little bit differently. One of the things we look at, and one of the reasons that I wasn't completely stressed out during this budget season, is that our economic outlook is decent for Tacoma Park. The assessable base, the value of property in the city, has been increasing. It shows that it's healthy. The net assessable base increased only 8%, and it's only 6% over what was expected. We will probably have a greater increase in future years, given this assessable base, once the different appeals of property tax assessments are dealt with. Income tax revenue has been increasing steadily. It's not a great increase, but it has been increasing steadily. I don't see a major change there. We have some exciting things on the horizon with the Purple Line construction, looking more and more like there'll be a day when they say go. Our work on the Tacoma Junction project. We've got economic development activities around the city's borders. We still do need to see some spur on, on New Hampshire Avenue. As we look at that economic context, and partly because things are improving, there has been the concern about housing prices and affordable housing in our community. There's a few budget principles that we follow as we go through this, and it's always helpful to remind ourselves of it, and, and remind myself, that we pay ongoing costs with ongoing funds. So things like salaries and regular expenses need to be on normal property tax or income tax, or inter-jurisdictional tax that we can count on. And if we get a windfall of a grant, or some other thing pops up, that could be spent on a one-time purchase or a one-time project, but it's not something that we would apply to normal expenditures. We've been very good in Tacoma Park about maintaining our infrastructure, even when the budgets are tight. We keep up with our road work, we keep up with the sidewalk work, we try to keep up with major purchases, and that has, that has actually done us very well. And of course, we follow laws and best practices about money. Some of the other kind of, they're not written in stone, but they're helpful. Predictability is... is good about budgets. When somebody asks me about, what did I think about this year's budget? I said, well, it's boring, and that's good. You'd rather have boring than, you know, creative. We try to minimize large variations when it comes to general fund expenditures, tax rates, personnel. One of the, one of the cases that I remember is Montgomery County in particular hired a lot more staff than they really could afford when the recession hit. And, you know, we can't just adjust staffing all the time to a particular need. We have to look at that carefully. The other thing is that we try to identify, is this something of service the city should provide? Is it something that there should be a user fee available for it as opposed to tax money funded service? And that's something to keep in mind as we go through these various services that we provide or think about providing. So we've got, going over quickly, budget trends in the various aspects of the budget. And this one right here shows our taxes and utility fees compared to our personnel expenses over the past four years. And they're very closely aligned. Taxes and utility fees still just are above it a little bit. There's certainly other expenses, and there's other revenue sources. But this is something that we watch carefully so that we're not getting out of whack as we go forward. On general fund revenues, the tax rate and the revenues have remained fairly flat since 2010. The rate has gone between 0.57 cents per 100 to the current 0.58 cents per 100, dropping, going up to 58 for a while. Revenues on that property tax rate have come in at about $10 million to $11.5 million. You have the control over the tax rate. And so how much that is, is dependent on your choice of the tax rate. Income tax, you don't have control over. It's 17% of what the county gets for the people who live in Tacoma Park. It's risen slowly since 2010, a little more steeply last year and this year. And that's averaging out with the surprise overpayment that we, well, underpayment or delayed payment that we receive from the controller's office. Intergovernmental revenue has remained pretty flat, and tax duplication's been the same. HUR is about the same. There's some uncertainty. The only real variation has come to be related to cable operating revenue. Property tax, income tax, and intergovernmental revenue comprise 90% of the general fund revenues. And this shows the property tax revenue over the past, I guess, 11 years. But it's been, for the bulk of that, between the $10 million and $12 million. The assessable base similarly was pretty stable for a long time. Of course, that's done with every three-year assessments. On a couple other revenues, they're just of interest. Parking revenue has increased sharply. We hired our part-time nuisance control officer who's done parking enforcement in the early evenings, and we have made a lot more money. That income has doubled since FY14. We also have done very well in recreation programming. Although those two categories have brought in about $1 million together, there are expenses for the processing of tickets and for the processing of registration fees. In terms of general fund expenditures on trends, we are in the third year of the salary increases. And as I mentioned in the transmittal letter, it's very much appreciated that the city council has supported the staff salary increases. One thing that has gone up a lot is workers' compensation, and we have collective bargaining this year. Cost of supplies and services have not changed much, and the capital costs have stayed very stable for our standard work, and I'll go through that a little bit. So in terms of the third year of phased-in increases, this year's increase of personnel costs, not including workers' compensation, so it's mostly salaries and benefits that are related to the salaries, average out an increase of about 5.5%. And that includes health benefits and those things that can go up steeply. Next year, we're anticipating that the average increase is closer to 2.3%, and that's because we will have completed that stepped-up work for the increases. On workers' compensation, it's gone up a lot, from $550,000 about this year to about $720,000 in the coming year. We'll be going over that when we talk about our nondepartmental budget with our HR director. We are going to be reviewing our policies and looking at ways to deal with this. Frankly, when you have public works and police officers, there are injuries. And so it is something that kind of comes with those kinds of services. We will be undertaking negotiations on our collective bargaining agreements for our two unions this year. That would set the salary terms and provisions for FY18 through FY20. Supplies and services haven't changed a lot between FY16 and FY17, only 1.9%. Knowing that we've had, we have a very tight budget, we've tried to keep our discretionary costs down. And even though it's not a lot of savings, we are trying to increase our savings in electricity use. When we get into capital costs, we try to do some things about the same every year. And it's actually worked pretty well. We try to devote $500,000 each to street repaving, to new sidewalks, and to ADA sidewalk work. We have information in the budget document about where some of that will take, is tentatively scheduled to take place. And I'd like to see that continue. Our equipment replacement reserve is a fund that we put in money every year to pay for things that we know we'll have to replace that are expensive. This year, we're getting a couple dump trucks, some police vehicles, and some HVAC equipment. We, for a dump truck, which costs about $100,000, we put in a certain amount of money for the life of the, expected life of a dump truck, so that we have the money the next time we have to buy a dump truck. The facilities maintenance reserve, we don't have policies really set on how we budget for it or what it should entail, and that's something we want to look at. This year, I did not allocate any funds to be contributed to the facilities maintenance reserve, but we will be using some of that for some of the work around the building. The stormwater fund is one that we have been, we charge $55, and for residential customers, and more based on impermeable surfaces for other customers. We probably will need a fee increase. We are not asking for it during this year. And then, there's no trends on special large projects. They always vary. So the stormwater management fee is $55 per year. Our revenue's $414,000 based on that. Sometimes you'll see more money because there's a special grant project, or that kind of thing. Our expenditures are running higher than the money that we bring in. And so we've been eating into the reserve money that had been there. By the end of this year, there's only about $87,000 left in that fund. And what I'd like to do is to get through this year, but also be working on some things that I think have been needed to be done to improve that stormwater fee program. One is, the assessments are done, are based on a survey from 20 years ago, 15 years ago, a long time ago. We need to have an updated survey of how much impermeable surface there are, there is for the different properties. And we don't have the credit programs for when somebody's doing good things for low-impact stormwater. And so having, you know, building that in as a whole policy to me makes some sense. And then we can identify what the fee should be, given those changes to the program. Special revenue funds, when you look through, we have a lot of information on the different special revenue funds and projects. These are grant funds for special projects. And sometimes there's some matches that the city needs to provide. The one thing that's kind of unusual in special revenue funds are the capital cable grant funds. There will be some upcoming discussion with you about the proposed MOU with Montgomery County. The franchise discussions have been completed about Comcast and RCN, and so some of that information will be coming to you. In the past, we've been receiving over $900,000 per year in capital funds for, that can only be spent on cable TV-related things or the wires that are somehow related to that and the management of that. Just referred to different ways, but fiber nets, about the closest one that I can use. We cannot spend that kind of money on an annual basis for that, for those uses. And we have $3.3 million in reserve to use for just those purposes. The new MOU would reduce that capital amount to $217,000 a year, and then would provide more money in operating revenue. Speed camera funds, we'll be getting some more information to you about that. The speed camera revenue has been going down over time. It may change a little bit because we have a sixth camera out, or seventh camera. But in general, people learn to drive better, and that's the point. And so we appreciate that. We are not getting lots of money that we spend on sidewalks anymore. We're getting about the amount of money that runs the program. And there are a couple things that will be coming up. One is that state law has required us to change from a per-ticket kind of payment to the vendor to a different kind of payment system. That will be coming before you for this year, or have to change this year. And then the following year, we do need to go out and decide how, what vendor to go with in the future, and how we want to handle the program. Capital budget. In the back of, almost back of your budget binder are a spreadsheet that has our capital budget in it. And that's what we'll be going through on Monday, kind of the details of what's in there. Some of the big projects are the Ethan Allen Gateway Street Gate project. It looks like the projection is that in the first quarter of FY17, it should be going out to bid. So then we'll have good prices about what will be required and what kind of impact that has for us. So that'll be useful to get. The Flower Avenue Green Street project's moving along. It's become much more complex, and we'll be getting a presentation on that. And construction could start at the end of this year, but it's probably going to be the very beginning of FY18. Library renovation expansion, hopefully we go to bid by the end of this year as we decide what kind of a configuration and scale we want to have that library be. We have concept designs that we're refining about the police space and the closing in of the first level of the atrium. We wouldn't be moving on that for several years. We are keeping up with the major purchases, like the dump trucks and those kind of things that show up on the equipment replacement reserve list. The one thing that's different, one vehicle that would be new would be a car that would go with the environmental code enforcement position. And I'm sure it would be an environmentally correct car as best it can be. When you look at the table, it has, it's somewhat of a complex table because it's defined by the projects, and then there's different funding sources often for the same project. So there is a key to it, that you can see what's general fund-related, what comes out of stormwater budget, that kind of thing. And so you can go through and, and look to see which things affect the city budget. Those tend to be those that are the general fund-related. So if it's equipment replacement reserve, which at least there's a reserve for, or the facility maintenance reserve, both of these are tax-based reserve funds. Oh, there's some trucks. The special revenue funds are grant funds. The speed camera funds are from the fines from the speed cameras, and the stormwater fund is from the fees that everyone pays for the stormwater, whether you're a nonprofit or not. So one of the things, when we look at the general fund, and that's the one that I think ends up being the critical thing to focus on as we go through these different sessions, are what do we do for, how do those general funds get into play? And one of the things that we could consider is to actually issue a bond for the street projects, for the part that the city has to pay in late FY17, early FY18, for Ethan Allen and for Flower Avenue. And we'll get closer information on the amounts for that to come. One of the things that, if that is done, it actually gives us a lot more flexibility with the funds that we have available for this year. There's information about why you want to bond. It's an essential budgeting tool. It allows those who benefit from a facility to help pay for it. The city charter has a lot of, has not a lot, but it has the parameters that we follow if we want to borrow money. We have borrowed both from the state government and from private banks. Banks sometimes have less flexible terms, and so for smaller projects, the Maryland Infrastructure Program is probably a better choice. And I did ask our contact at the Maryland Infrastructure Fund, you know, an estimated cost for, say, borrowing $2 million for a street project. And what that could be is if you did, if you paid it back over just five years, it would be $415,000 a year, and it comes out, we'd pay like $2,070,000. We could do it over 10 years at an annual cost of $220,000, but then it's more like $200,000 fee for that interest to do that. With the operating budget, we'll look at overview, some organizational changes that I'm proposing as part of this budget, the proposed new positions, environmental code enforcement, and some discussion of community grants and partnerships. I started out putting this, that most of the operating budget is boring, but boring didn't seem like the appropriate thing to put on the screen, so I put unremarkable, and most of it is unremarkable. And as you go through, I am not going to have each department come up and do, you know, we make this mouse, and we're paid, it's in the book. I'm happy to answer questions. We're just going to focus on those things that I think have, need to be explained, or you want to see some changes in. The discretionary funds that are in this budget are designed to advance the council priorities. The full-time equivalents, the number of staff that we have, if you combine them into 40-hour work weeks, increases from 163.23 to 165.15. That represents one new full-time position, and then some adjustments in hours for part-time staff. This also, again, related to the cable franchise agreement and the memorandum of understanding with Montgomery County, includes $458,000 for cable operating revenue, which is up from $125,000 currently, and then the same amount about of cable franchise fees of $242,000. This amount would cover seven FTEs in communications and IT that work on things that are, would meet the criteria for those cable operating funds. As I've intimated to you before, I'm proposing a new neighborhood services division within the police department that would deal with property code enforcement, parking enforcement, and nuisance control, which can also deal with noise response, response to loud noises, and a new environmental code enforcement position. That change also means that the Housing and Community Development Department has restructured from six divisions into three, an administration, a planning and development services, and housing and community services. The proposed new position... The proposed new position would do education and enforcement on a variety of environmental-related codes that the city has. Safe grow with pesticides, polystyrene ban, multifamily and business recycling, invasive vegetation control that's been on our books for a long time. We have not done a good job enforcing, and we do get a number of complaints about. And a possible plastic bag ban. In this division, though, people, there will be specialties because you'll learn things. But we'll be doing cross-training because there are times when everybody might be out helping each other on environmental control or parking or noise or some other things. So we're going to do a cross-training. It allows for coverage when somebody's not there. And it also can help do some complementary approaches to addressing some neighborhood problems where there's a lot of trash, where there's some other issues going on. How can they support each other and support the other departments with, with more of a joint effort? The other thing that is in the budget are a variety of either community grants or some kind of partnership or contract funds. And I've listed a number of them here. We have $180,000 for the community grant program. It says in the highlights in the book, $210,000. There's some different ways of counting, so I'm trying to be more specific on this list. Things that we've supported over a long time, the Independent State Committee, the Folk Festival, Old Tacoma Business Association, Tacoma Langley, Crossroads Development Authority. In the recreation budget, there's $60,000 that in this current year has been used for Lunch and Learn and Man Up. We're not specifying it particularly, but those are partnerships to advance council priorities. And that money remains in the FY seventeen budget. We also have money in our CDBG grants that are service-provided kind of activities. Meeting the council priorities in the budget, under the category of a livable community for all, we've got $40,000 for something related to, some study related to what we should be doing with affordable housing, addressing affordable housing. We have our continued assistance for low-income homeowners, whether it's property maintenance, addressing property maintenance issues, or to helping do the payment to assist low-income folks with the property taxes. We've got park improvements, the design for the library, our basic sidewalk and road improvements, which they sound really boring, but if the, if the, if the streets aren't good, it is, it's a real, it just drives everything badly. And then, of course, we have our support for a number of community events and arts. In the category of fiscally sustainable government, we have added some, we've added some funds for both, some additional lobbying money to lobby the county, so in addition to the work that we have at the state. And we also have several little pots of money for graphic design work and other kinds of things to help promote communication in ways that we've talked about in the policy, in the priorities discussions. I've also done another year of contributing an extra $100,000 to the police retirement plan. Under environmentally sustainable government, I have the new environmental code enforcement position. We have our substantial investment in our Sustainable Energy Action Plan and efforts towards the Georgetown Energy Prize, continuing the same level. I think it's about $160,000 in incentives and assistance for these programs this year. And we have our regular low-impact stormwater management programs that we continue to expand. Under engaged, responsive, service-oriented government, it's time for another resident survey. It's been a few years. It would be very useful in meeting a couple of our goals, both for targeting ways to improve our service delivery, targeting and identifying issues that have been raised related to police community relations. And also, one of the things we had talked about is wanting to do a strategic planning effort. I don't think we're at the right year for that. I think we need to get some base information. I think we've got a lot on our plates. But it is something that would be very useful for this community. And again, the graphic work to help communicate key issues. For advanced economic development efforts, we have $50,000 for economic development study, planning, something that we'll need to work on and determine what that is, as well as the Ethan Allen Gateway Project on, at New Hampshire Avenue. So we have a couple other opportunities that the council can consider to advance your priorities. One is some kind of a fund for, related to affordable housing that's more substantive than, than a study, but something that will help implement information that we came out of the community conversation on affordable housing. And revolving funds can be very useful. It doesn't have to be that. Amounts over $300,000 are important. I mean, it does need to be real money for this. When you're talking about buildings, it adds up. May be possible, one of the things that was very nice when we met with officials in Montgomery County was that they might help contribute to this fund, and that would be nice. One of the things, and there's several suggestions about how we could get money for this fund. We have $120,000 in fund in the budget for the home repair program. It may be that instead of doing that, or you could use some or all of that for this fund. Another thing that has been talked about is, besides the community grant program, maybe kind of formalizing a partnership program for those entities that may be useful in providing multi-year services that advance a council priority. And the funds for those, for that kind of a program could be taken from the amount that's designated for community grants that's in the budget, or you could allocate some extra money for that. Another opportunity that you have is either to increase or decrease the tax rate. And part of that is your idea about balancing where benefits should go. Should they go to the taxpayers that pay those tax rates? Or is it more useful to not do a tax decrease, but to agglomerate monies so that you can target services? And that's part of a discussion that you can have about how you best want to use funds. So the proposed tax rate, as I mentioned, is 58.5 cents per $100 valuation. The constant yield rate is over 3 cents less than that at 55.18 per cents per $100 valuation. A cent equals about $210,000. If you reduce the tax rate by a cent, there'd be almost no money over that $3 million in the general fund, unassigned fund balance. But of course, that amount could change if you do some bonding or do some other choices about this budget. The other thing that you can do, and this may go to the Affordable Housing Fund or something else, is you could designate or either very formally through a charter change or informally through direction and discussion about a certain amount, a cent, a half-cent that goes to a particular issue or a particular need that you have. So in here, you could say a half-cent for your Affordable Housing Fund would be kind of designated to that and encouraged that that be done over time. And we have a schedule to talk about all this stuff. So today did my presentation. A number of you have been asking me questions. I appreciate that. I'm sure you're going to have a lot more questions, and it's helpful to get those and be able to respond to you. On Monday night, well, our focus will be on the capital budget. We'll go through some of the big projects and what all those kind of mean. You can ask a lot of questions to the folks who work with them. On next Wednesday is a public hearing on the budget. Of course, the public can speak at any time, but that's designated a public hearing day. On Monday, the 18th, there'll be programs advancing the council goals. So this is kind of the softer programming side of it. It's not the capital side of that. And then on Monday, April 25th, try not to say it's the boring night, but it's kind of the, the wrap-up night because there's questions about, there's some stuff like non-departmental that does deserve a little bit of discussion about the workers' comp and that kind of thing. But it's also your opportunity to say, you know, what's really involved in this recreation change or whatever? And that's, you know, that could be something that you might want to do. Speaking of recreation, I did want to mention, yes, girls' basketball. That is part of the plan. I've got a lot of inquiries about that. On Wednesday, April 27th, it's another public hearing on the budget. This is also the night that's, we are required to have a constant yield tax rate hearing. This helps reinforce to people that just because a tax rate doesn't change or does change, that it isn't the same as how much you pay. And so it's an opportunity to think about that. As you go through this, we have on Monday, April 25th, a budget reconciliation discussion. I think we'll be encouraging you to, when you see something that you want to suggest that should go on the budget reconciliation, that you mention it. So we have that running list. There'll be more of a discussion as, as we go through this. But on Wednesday, May 4th, you need to decide what, what is the reconciliation numbers because we have to calculate what that does to the budget and prepare the budget ordinances. And so as we go through that, I'll work with you, Mayor, on, on how to help structure that so that we get through it very cleanly and transparently. When there's something that you want to see changed, but you don't, but it's not clear what the amount is, we need to know so we'll be able to come up with the amount that can associate with that change. Then Wednesday, May 11th is the first reading of the budget ordinances, and May 18th is the second reading of the budget ordinances. And then we all go home and sleep. That's my presentation. I do want to acknowledge that I had wonderful help from the staff. Susan has been great. Jason's been great. Catches everything I miss. And we did have Yolanda Brooks came in and did a little bit of consulting to make sure that we were doing, crossing every T, and, and that went well. It does help that it's a pretty straightforward budget. And, and as I said, it's not creative, so there's that. Are there any particular things, having gone through this, that you want to see me make sure that we cover during the work sessions? Or if there's any other kind of questions that you think of later, you can email me. But I am happy to answer any brief questions at this time.
I have a question regarding workers' compensation. Are other municipalities seeing the same thing, do you know?
I'll find out. That's a good question. That's a good question.
On that same vein, can we have the Director of Human Resources, when she talks to us, talk about, I felt we're supposed to implement a safety program?
Yes, and we, and we are.
Okay.
And we've made some good improvements. There's a couple of things that happened. I'll just, I'll, I won't, she'll go into it in more detail. There's some things that just happened. We have a police officer who, during an arrest, got bitten on the hand and has caused serious problems. That is what happens. I mean, that, that's not something that a safety provision, plan is going to help. There are other times when safety plans make a lot of difference. How do our workers jump off the trash trucks? We've had a safety person actually in, an ergonomic specialist come in and ride with, on the trucks too and give some instruction. That's been very enlightening. And some changes have been made because of that. And then there's other things that do run, run up the program a lot, which is, how long do we keep people on the payroll when we don't know that they can never come back? And so some of those are really hard emotional questions because you know them and, and you want to help them. But at some point, we also have to play a line that says, you know, it, it isn't the role of the city to just keep, keep you on if you're not doing the work. So part of that is a tough discussion. So the HR director can adjust kind of what the percentages of those things are and what we're doing.
And for police and police works, is there an individual designated as the safety officer that tries to work with staff? Not just through HR, but someone on the ground?
Well, I, yes and no. I mean, we have a team. We have a team, and it includes representation from each of those divisions. But I don't know that anybody's designated as a safety officer. And that may actually be a good idea to do.
Councilmember McCrory?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Ludlow, for this great presentation. I would just, it seems as if particularly on the Monday, April 18th budget work session, we may discuss this, but some of your last few slides are things that are of interest to me, which involves the Affordable Housing Revolving Fund, which I would, if possible, if you can sort of come with some kind of concept as how you see that being envisioned. Because I think after we had our community conversation, it's a very important council priority. And, and I think that if we can approach it through a revolving fund, it makes most sense. And the same goes for the slide that follows that, which is this partnership program. And I think about youth engagement and youth issues. You talk about Lunch and Learn and Man Up and other organizations that participate actively in the community on an annual basis to create a multi-year funding rather than asking them to come with their, you know, hat in their hand or, or go to the community grants program or the grants committee. I think it makes a lot of sense to establish sort of a, a less tedious process for those we work with on a regular basis, so thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, a couple, couple areas that I'm curious about that I don't expect you to address tonight, but something I'd like you to pay attention to as we go on. I guess I'd like to get some help, so I can better understand the decision-making that surrounds financing capital improvements. Now, I know that, you know, the thing that municipalities do is they, they borrow the money, and it's called bonding. And, and that's fine. That part is, is not, is not the, not the issue for me. But the question is, is that when do we decide? Or how do we decide when we pay for something out of current operating cash flows of, of the city? As opposed to borrowing the money through the state of Maryland or through a bank and paying, and paying over a period of years? And related to that, of course, what are the actual, the true costs of, you know, the interest rates? And, and there's the absolute cost. You say, well, we're going to borrow, we need to borrow $2 million, but we're going to pay $189,000 in interest. Well, that's, that's, that's the burden that we're lifting with, by doing it that way. So I think those are things that are, I, I sometimes feel that those among us on the city council may have varying comfort levels with how that works. The other question I have is in the economic development study that is suggested as to what staff thinks would be the purpose, scope of such a study and, you know, what we end up with that will advance the process of economic development. I, I am concerned that, and I won't say anything more about it tonight, that for priority that's been a priority, we are still not really getting our teeth sunk into the whole business of economic development. You and I've talked about that. So that's something I'm going to be commenting on at a later time.
Thanks. Councilmember Mall?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to go through a bunch of things, but some of them we can talk about by email or otherwise later on. I appreciate the report in terms of a $3 million sort of expected need for the general fund balance, the unassigned balance. And I, my preference would be to move toward describing a percentage as a goal. So for example, in the resolution that the, that the council uses to pass the budget at the end of the process in May, having one of the lines of the resolution be a, you know, whereas the council sets a goal of maintaining approximately, and I don't know what the percent is, but it looks like it's somewhere between, you know, 12 and 15 percent, maintaining a 15% unassigned general fund balance, you know, and this, and this budget does that or does it with, with the consideration of the $1 million. That, that to me would be ideal because then it becomes a goal that endures to the next cycle. And this is follows on. And this is follows on Councilmember Schultz's comment. I think with regard to the question of borrowing money through bonds, it would be really useful to have an aggregate picture of how much money we have in bond-related debt.
Right.
And how that's changed over the last 10 years. I've done something like that for myself, and it's, I just find it really helpful because our borrowing is once very high.
Yeah.
And it's gone way down.
Right.
And so, and the, I find the CAFERS as well as these documents confusing because it breaks out individual funds that are borrowed.
As opposed to the aggregate, yeah.
Yeah, which I understand why from a manager's perspective, that's important, but from a public perspective, you know, it's the aggregate amount I think that's useful. So that would certainly be helpful to me in, in these questions about five-year versus 10-year and what are we going to borrow money for. I assume that you mentioned the 125 in cable monies going to, about, going up to 458 and then with the additional monies being higher than that. That's built into your budget?
That is built into the budget.
Okay. So that assumes that we're going to get there and we think we're going to get there.
That assumes that, yes.
Great. I appreciate the way you described the new person dealing with environmental provisions as education and enforcement, and you put education first.
Absolutely.
And so that's, that's great, but I just wanted to note that. Thank you on the county lobbying, potential county lobbying resources. One of the issues I mentioned, and it's a broader question, was are these lines around services and charges? And the piece that I'm more broadly interested in is, given the changing nature of government services and how technology plays a role that it didn't play 20 years ago, and I'll use the example of the crime analyst that we now have in our police department who has Interpol experience.
Right.
We could have chosen to contract that. I don't know how, but we could have chosen to use a contractor. I think it's great that we chose to create a position in-house to do something that's very important for a responsive and effective police force. But, you know, for example, we outsource through a contract the maintenance and ticketing of our, of our speeding tickets, and we have a contract, I understand now, for the parking tickets and so on. And so there's, I think you said roughly 2.8 or $1 million in services and charges.
Right.
And so I just really urge just to look at those and where, where a, where a service is going to be consistent year after year after year, to your point earlier about staffing going up and down, where we're clearly going to use it. If it's possible to bring that in-house, pay for wages, pay for benefits, pay for workman's comp, treat those employees well, I generally favor that, again, if it's a predictable thing, knowing that it takes some new set of technical skills, for example, to maintain speed cameras. But I just wanted to mention that, and in passing mentioned that in our back-and-forth by email about the police fees for parking tickets. I'm not aware that we did an RFP or that the council approved the contract for that. I think it's, I think you had roughly like 169, the amount of money for the services and fees in the police budget went from 61 to 169,000. And one of the things that you indicated to me was that a big part of that was for the parking ticket-related work.
Right.
Did we do a, I mean, it would have been-
We didn't, but this is a situation where the parking tickets, if somebody wants to pay online or they, or if we need to follow up on something, they get a certain thing per parking ticket. So that's why that number goes up. It's not that it was, it wasn't like we even had an estimate of how much that, how much that would be. One of the things that I've wondered about similarly is, you know, how do we share that information and, you know, what, what is the role? I guess, you know, when does council approve that? And I'm not really sure on that one.
Okay. Well, maybe we could just have a policy conversation about that at some point. Thank you on sidewalks, on the amount of funding proposed.
Okay.
The stormwater fee, I would find it informative in that I remember maybe two or it could be three years ago now, Director Braithwaite gave a presentation and talked about the overall goals that we must meet to achieve our, our stormwater goal within the state and the county. And her saying at that time that we're ahead of schedule and that we're, you know, we're sort of going to get there. And so that just, to me, raised the question of the fee increase and whether the fee increase is necessary because we're still trying to get to our goal or because it's about maintenance of the things that we've, that we put in. And so having that, like a written assessment of progress and where we need to go would be informative for that potential fee increase. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm sorry. One more little thing, which is on this timeline you had, at the very end, there's final reconciliation, final budget reconciliation on May 4th. And I think it would just be helpful to build into one of the earlier sessions, maybe two weeks before the 25th. Yeah, and just, just making it clear when we have that on the agenda that sort of this is the moment when council members and mayor are suggesting things to the public. So I know it, but making it clear to the, to the, to the public that if you want something in the budget, that that's really the time to try to get it in the budget.
Right.
And the public hearing is, you know, is one time at which to advocate, but, you know, making sure that you've, you've put something in there is key. And so for the newsletter or for any other information for the agenda or rolling agenda, it would be helpful to, to make that really clear.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Ms. Ludlow, for this good presentation. I appreciate the work that you and staff have put into this, this year, and I think it's very well organized and helpful. My comments aren't surprises. They're things we've talked about before. The very first one, it doesn't even relate to the presentation. It related more to your comments at the beginning of the session. And I just want to express my appreciation for looking into the Complete Street grant for Maple Avenue.
Yep.
I appreciate that. I just wanted to comment that I know that some members of this council have advocated for spending down the reserves, and I just wanted to reiterate my opinion that I think the city residents are well-served by the council keeping a, more than a minimum reserve level. And it relates some to what Councilmember Schultz talked about earlier of when we have a major project where we do want to implement a big expenditure, that having some savings to help you with that is, is cheaper than going out to get a loan that's going to cost you money.
Right.
And the other thing is that during difficult economic times, it's, can be very helpful to the city residents for us to maintain the level of service by using some of that money out of our savings rather than increasing the tax rate when everybody's struggling a little. So, lastly, I wanted to, again, just mention again my hesitancy to add positions, new positions. When we increase our expenditures by putting in staff, that's, that's an ongoing expense. We're committing money for future years, not just the current year. And so I will be personally looking at those very critically to see which, if any, that we need to add to our staffing. Thank you.
Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you, Mayor. It's my first budget here, so thank you for going through that. I'll probably have more questions going forward. Just a few things, and some of these follow along with what other people talked about. I also like the county lobbying, just my experience today and getting ready for today to testify, leads me to believe we need that. On the stormwater piece, since it isn't really supposed to be a money-making thing as much as a, a way to get a particular result, I do think, and several people in the community have talked to me about this, that having some sort of credit or other trade-off for people who, I don't know if this is the right term, but put in a rain garden or something like that, we should consider that. I know it exists at the county.
Right.
Because we're a city, we can't do it. I think that would be a useful thing. On the FiberNet Reserve, how flexible is that money, so, and could you use that to get some sort of broader, you know, way of connecting parts of the, of the city to something? Or is it literally just laying cable?
It, it's, it's city TV purchases, which can be things related to this room, to their, to their cameras, the equipment that transmits the signal to the county, which then distributes across through the cable companies. It's lines and IT servers and things that support that, those activities. It, we have tried to push in many ways to see if there's some other ways to help expand wireless service to others, and it's not something that's legally allowable. So we've not been able to do that.
Okay. On the, on the bonding, is there, I mean, right now, normally the more years you go out, then the more you end up paying in interest. And so obviously, there may not be one literal maximum number of years, but it starts to make less and less sense. On the other hand, the interest rates are still really low now, so just maybe as we go through this, you can kind of work that in. I know you mentioned a couple of weeks ago that we had refinanced, I don't know if that's everything or just some of what we owe in bonds.
Some of what we owe, but it was a major portion.
So just having that information will be helpful. Just a few other things, and appreciate the indulgence. On the revolving fund, you don't have to answer all of this now, but you mentioned that 300,000 seemed to be sort of the floor.
That's my gut feeling, and it's, yeah.
Okay, but that isn't like, we don't know that's a recommended amount for a city or a size necessarily.
It kind of depends on what you-
I'm not questioning, but-
Right. It depends on what you want to do with it.
Yeah, okay. I thought I saw something in the larger document about specific streets being paved. Is that somewhere that we could see?
It is.
Again, not tonight, but-
Sure. When we go through the capital projects, we'll have the list.
Okay. And last two things, we talked once, not that long ago, about the inventory tax, and it'd be helpful to me to sort of see how that fits into all this. And lastly, it finishes up on May 18th. Is that like, I mean, I don't want to extend it past May 18th, but is that a required date or like, if, if we were fighting, could it go another week or?
It could go a little, it could go a little bit later, but I'm not sure the date that we have to submit the tax rate to the county for their computers is like the 22nd or something like that.
So that's really it then?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
That's why we're trying to take off the 25th.
What's that?
That's why we're trying to take off the 25th.
Oh, yeah.
Councilmember?
Off me.
No, Crushy, right.
I, one thing I forgot to mention, and I know Ms. Ludlow and Mr. Danover, we had a conversation about this, and I think you mentioned this to Councilmember Kovar. You know, I live in a place that I proudly now call Hell's Bottom. I know it wasn't, it wasn't a word used to compliment the area, but one thing that we have a lack of, and has a Sligo Mill Overlook Park, which still is in contemplation but hasn't started, is there are a number of children in the Pinecrest community that walk all the way over to Spring Park on Poplar, and there is a real lack of sidewalks there. So as we approach our discussions, I would just like to see, I know that there's a number of budgets where this could come from. It could be capital, it could be speed camera, but I'd like to just see if we can help out Pinecrest and Hell's Bottom in that, in that discussion.
Councilmember Schultz?
I wanted to pick up something that Councilmember Kovar was touching on, and that is the, the cable funds. We know that for years until now, all that money was pretty much, was 100% designated for capital expenditures. And because we could only spend so much money, we've built up a reserve there that, I mean, it's, it's an embarrassment of riches, but it's extraordinarily frustrating. And my understanding is through these negotiations that have been ongoing over the last year with the cable, the county cable people and the various franchisers, that we're looking at a different formula that will allow a lower total sum of money come to, but of what does come, a good chunk will be able to go into operating.
That's right.
Now, so that lead, make sure I got that clear. Would not some of that money therefore be able to cover the salaries of people who are in the IT and communications that are otherwise-
Yes.
-being paid for out of the general fund?
Yes.
Kind of like we use with the speed camera money to pay for some, for some police salaries that would otherwise, would have to come out of our general fund. And if, if I'm on the right path here, then does that not sort of free up some general fund money that we would be not having to expense?
It does, but I did that in this budget. It does. It, I mean, it goes into, it's counted part of our revenue.
Uh-huh.
So it, it, it would cover the cost of seven FTEs.
That's a lot.
That's a lot.
That's ten.
Yeah, five in, five in communications and two in IT. And so I was happy to use it that way.
That's 5% of our employees, approximately, seven of them.
I'm not the mathematician, but I'm not agreeing with that.
I think it's a little different, but-
Well, anyway.
Anyway, it's good.
Let's just call it a bunch.
It's a bunch.
Right. Sort of a scientific word. It just hopefully means that we have more flexi, we have more, we more have more liquidity to put the full around with than we have had in past years.
I've appreciated, I appreciated being able to use that revenue. It does, it does though presuppose an action by the council.
The Montgomery County Council?
Your, no, you. Because we have to take action on the proposed memorandum of understanding.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right. Since people are going around a second time, I'm going to jump in with my comments. I just want to extend my thank you to City Manager, the Finance Director, and the Deputy City Manager for this budget. I do think it is very reflective of the conversations that this council has had over the last few months. We'll obviously discuss it much more, but it's, it's nice to see the priorities we've been discussing reflected here. Just on a couple of points, I wanted to also underscore, as Councilmember Mail said, the new position you put in, the emphasis on education and enforcement, and to say that I'm fully supportive of moving forward in that direction. We do and we have, and we continue to add things that I think are important, like as we will talk about a plastic bag ban and other things, but it is very frustrating to our residents when we are unable to educate and enforce those regulations. So I was glad to see that. In addition, the county lobbying, I think we have seen in just the few short months we have all been together on this council, the importance of making sure we know what is happening at the county level. And I've noticed in the last few months, we've really stepped up our game, and I think putting more resources there is important for us. I would like to echo what Councilmember Schultz said about the economic development study. It seems to me that we may want to discuss, I do want money put in that direction on economic development, but given recent meetings we've had and conversations, I'm not sure whether or not we need a study or maybe a consultant or somebody else to really help us push out what we have already that our staff has created and the opportunities for economic development in our city. On the, the bond issue, I think I'll join a couple of my other colleagues who already said this. This is more information, particularly on the aggregate bond debt that we have would be really helpful. In addition, the, any other information that can be provided about the Housing Revolving Fund or the Partnership Program, those are two things I'd also be interested in. And I would also just like to say thank you for the having, including the Girls' Basketball League in the Rec Department Fund budget. That is something that I have received many requests for. So, let's see, I have Councilmember, let's see, I'm going to go Councilmember Smith because he has not spoken yet.
Well, this will be the second time.
Oh, you said spoke already on the budget?
Yeah.
Sorry.
I guess I'm going to join everyone else. Thank you, Ms. Ludlow, for the budget. Appreciate it.
I would suggest if we're going to pursue the housing fund, that before we enact anything, we transmit it to the county's housing department to make sure the direction that we want to go is something that is in line with their mission and that they will actually fund it. I don't want us to get down the road where we commit 400, 500,000 and- and the senior personnel in that department say, well, that's interesting, but we don't wanna do that. So I think it'd be really important that we make sure that what we're gonna do is the same thing as something they will support. The other thing is regarding taking programs like Lunch and Learn and Man Up and possibly making them line items or having a different relationship with the city. I've had a conversation with Lynn Soboloff at Montgomery Collaboration Council and discussed with her having a larger role in these programs because they are a quasi-county organization. So it may make sense that, you know, during this process, we could talk to Ms. Soboloff and maybe the Director of Montgomery County Collaboration Council and see if there's any way, there's some synergy with what we're trying to do in their mission. Because they are the ones that got the grant for the 21st Century Department Education Grant, which is over a million dollars for three years. And I think it makes sense that we could tap into their expertise and help us get funding, not just on the government side, but maybe some foundations around the area. Everything else is great, thank you very much.
Councilmember Mail?
Thanks. I wanna second Councilmember Siemens's comments. I will also look hard at the new positions in the budget. Not just new positions, but new tenths and twentieths and thirds of positions. On the revolving fund, I love that idea, City Manager and I spoke about that last weekend, and Deputy City Manager. Revolving, I think I know what that implies, but I assume for the purposes of the public, what it implies is that money goes out and comes back in through some other source, and thus it's not constantly a city expenditure. That said, I'm also interested in non-revolving loans or non-revolving funds in the sense that if there are ways we need to build programs that the city council makes an investment, maybe it's a one-time investment that's used over multiple years, almost like creating a reserve or, you know, it's to do a pulse of activity for some reason, even including bonding or borrowing money for that purpose if we're able to do so. I'm, you know, perfectly interested in those sides of things. I wanna say that I'm interested both in the, using the fund to make sure we deal with apartment-style housing and also so we deal with single-family housing, and in particular, single-family housing that's occupied by seniors. And I'd note that the three or four members of the county council, at least I just saw this, are introducing a proposal that would allow anyone over 65, and maybe there's an income test, I can't remember, to not pay any increase in property taxes until the time that their house is sold. So that would be an interesting way to benefit residents that wouldn't per se be a housing fund, but would be a way to, to not have taxes go up on a subset of residents. Following up on Councilmember Schultz's question about the ability to use cable funds for positions as opposed to general fund, I just note that on page 17, the communications budget and the housing and community development budget from the general fund go up for both departments. So it would really be helpful to see, and I think this is consistent with where Councilmember Schultz is going, for the positions that can be supported by that special fund, that special revenue fund, how the money, the breakdown of the, of the funds and how those two different funds are used to pay for the department's costs, including personnel. And so just showing us the, into the weeds a little bit on that department last year versus this year, assuming that shift. Sticking to the cable reserve as well, the 3 million-plus balance, that money is ours, right? If it's come to the city. And our contracts or cooperative agreements with Comcast and Verizon have been renegotiated.
Yeah, not Verizon, but-
So legally, what is it that prevents us from using that money for something else right now? Or where I'm getting to is if we had our attorney and whatever other attorney it took examine that and see whether an action by the council could result in the use of, let's say, monies that have been sitting there for five years or 10 years for another operating purpose, whether we actually have the authority to make a decision like that or whether we do not.
Yeah, I can get the legal, the legal decision on that. I know we don't, but I can get the specifications about that.
Would we get arrested as we're talking?
That's why I asked for lawyer's help.
Probably would just get sued.
But that might be true, but whether they would care, you know, if it was money that was, that had been there for a while, we'd just renegotiated a new agreement. And whether we couldn't get to some agreement separate from our negotiations about using that. I mean, for example, just from the brand value, if we were gonna use it to, to put money into a housing fund, they could be part of that announcement, you know, the cable companies that are part of that. My last comment is around the duplication, double taxation. And I wonder whether we could do, almost like a label on a food product, whether we could send an invoice to the county with our budget. That was our Finance Director and City Manager and Deputy City Manager's best attempt to figure out what the duplicated services are or duplicated payments, I'm probably gonna miss these up, and give a breakdown and say, because we provide these programs, but our taxpayers also pay you for them and for programs and services that they particularly don't provide in the city, this is the bill that, this is what the invoice would look like. Do it as an invoice, do it almost as a, it's PR-related. I don't wanna be too much in their face, but, but I wouldn't mind being a little bit more in their face about it. And do something like that and just present like, this is the, this is truth in the budget. This is why your taxes are this level. This is why we can't provide services for other services because we're busy paying for things that the county charges you for but doesn't, doesn't provide. And I think maybe we could do something really simple like that, literally like a nutrition label or like an invoice, that would, that would be informative and could be a part of our budget going forward.
If we do that, I would hope that we could take a picture, put it on Twitter. So that residents could see it.
I think that's something that has come up a couple of times over the last couple of months, yeah.
Yeah, no, I think, I think that, I mean, that's part of the reason we're focusing on it with some of these activities.
Okay, well, I see no other comments, and we're getting close to 8:30. Just in order, I'm 9:30, oh, sorry, I'm sorry, it's been a long week. Just in order to give the city staff some direction, what I think I've been trying to keep a tally of everyone's comments tonight, I believe I've heard, maybe not from everybody, but from a number of council members, the desire to continue looking into the option of the bonds by providing more information. In addition, giving more information regarding the, whatever we're calling the housing fund and the partnerships as well. Does that, other people hear the same thing? Are there other, some of these other big picture things that may take more effort to put together that any council members would like to see in upcoming meetings?
You can send them to me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I sort of gave a list of things, I'd rather not have to repeat them, but I think the clerk probably captured them. I wouldn't expect most, any of them-
Right, I think there's little, I think these are like the big, I was thinking like the really, the bigger picture ones, so.
Yeah, I think for the, for Monday night's meeting, we'll talk about the capital budget and as much funding information as I can provide at that time. The discussion about economic development, affordable housing, partnerships that would come on the second Monday night.
Perfect. And just again, as Councilmember Mail said, putting a plug in, if there are items that as we go through this, you'd like to add to a reconciliation list, please start bringing them forward and make sure residents know about the schedule for the budget as we go through it. And I think with that, we will adjourn.
Thanks very much.
Is the schedule separately broken out so we can just like tweet that or put it on Facebook?
I'll make sure you have a copy, it's also on the rolling agenda.
Right.
We can send it to you. I love the nutrition label idea.
I think I've referenced it.
I think so, yeah.